It is 7:30. We'll call our October 1st, 2021 Little Falls Regular City Council Meeting to Order. We do have a quorum. We're all here. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Inherent place all agenda items on the table for discussion. We will need to postpone item five until our next meeting. What is the wish of the council?
I make motion to approve the agenda without item number five.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Canofla. Call a roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg? Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of September 20th, 2021. The regular meeting of September 20th, 2021. The closed meeting of September 20th, 2021. And the special meeting of September 27th, 2021. Approve. I move to approve the minutes of all those meetings.
Second.
I did notice when I was reading through, the meeting that I wasn't at on the 20th. I think I was listed as closing one. That was Councilmember Hanson. And then I think in the one of the 27th, I think we got switched around with those. Yes. Go ahead.
Can I?
Yep.
Sorry, there's a delay. Under item seven, Revolution 2021-73, it says I voted yes when I actually abstained.
Got that changed? And President Hercock, what was yours that?
Let me go look. I think it was the...
He wasn't at the meeting on the 20th.
I was absent on the 20th. And it says Councilmember Hanson opened the meeting. And I think if I get to the bottom here, I think it says I closed the meeting.
Okay.
And then I think we have the same thing happening in the opposite order for our special meeting of the 27th. Yeah, the one that says I adjourned the meeting at 8:30 from the 20th, but that would be Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, it's Hanson opening the meeting.
Why can I not see this?
And then the one of the 27th, Councilmember...
Hanson, okay.
Hanson called it to Council Vice President Hanson. Sorry, I'll get her straight. Called it to order.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Call a roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Carries.
Approval of the bills. Checks 105561 through 105625 totaling $1,138,425.77. Approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goshick, second by Councilmember Storley. Call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
You're...
Yes.
Thank you. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Item five postponed till next meeting consent agenda. Deferral of special assessment. 2021B Public Improvement 389. Approve. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, September 2021. Receive. Housing and Redevelopment Authority Minutes, August 2021. Receive. Morrison County Attorneys Prosecution Report, July and August 2021. Receive. Public Works Reports, August 2021. Receive. Recycling Reports, July and August 2021. Receive. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll move to receive and approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. Call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Public hearings and lettings. Lettings. Fall Leaf and Brush Collection. Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuse and Recycling Incorporated. Award. Lori.
Yes, Council President and members of the council. Staff requested quotes for our Fall Leaf and Brush Collection from our local haulers. We did receive two quotes, one from Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuse and Recycling at $4,245. The second one came in from City Sanitary Commercial at $6,150. So, we are requesting that the city council award the low quotation to Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuse and Recycling for the Leaf and Brush Collection to be charged to our SCORE grant. The collection will be held on Saturday, October 23rd, rain or shine. Bags will be left, so we ask that people that put out leaves, leave a rock, or something heavy to put on top of the bags once they empty them, so they don't blow all over.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award it to Bob. I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion?
Also tell them not to tie them.
Oh, yes, untied, yes, untied bags.
Bob gets kind of wild.
Call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Hockey rink. Minnesota Surplus Services. Ratify and confirm. John?
Yeah, I can take that for Greg. So, the... So Greg and Peter were looking on the state surplus auction site, and the city of Bemidji had their hockey boards for auction. Found they were in very good condition and put in a bid for those and ended up getting it for $7,025. And have made contact with the city about arranging for the pickup and so they can bring them in and have them installed this year.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goshick, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Are these to be used at the West Side rink?
That's the intent.
What kind of shapes the North End rink in?
Pretty bad, but that hasn't been flooded in the last few seasons.
Yeah, because it's been a long time since we restored that thing.
Call a roll, please.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Irrigation well test. Alternate North Star Drilling Golf Course. Award. John?
Thank Council President. We're exploring, due to the drought from this year, we weren't able to irrigate from the river due to our permit. DNR still has the restriction actually on that flow since it hasn't gotten up to the normal flow levels, even low level normal flow levels. So, we are exploring the option of drilling a well for the golf course to run the irrigation system out of. I've contacted with North Star Drilling. And in order to do that, we'd have to first do test holes and then run test pumps. That's mandated by the DNR to do that. Typically, Jesse Oathout from North Star explained that it typically is an eight-hour run of those pumps, but they, he said, there is possibility they could go up to 24, but he thinks that unlikely. So with that, we had the items all broken out into different prices. We also do have a quotation yet for the installation of the irrigation well if we do identify a site. However, if the test holes are determined that there is not adequate water supply in the area to run that level of irrigation, then we wouldn't be moving on to the later steps. So, really, we'd be looking at approval of the first two items, one contingent upon the other. And then if those determine an ideal location for it, we would come back with the quotation for the well, installing well. All, the entire project is likely to not exceed... Early quotes are $25,000, but, you know, who knows with materials and other things like that, what it might bring.
What is the wish of the council? I'll move to award the well test to North Star Drilling.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Would the DNR be able to put restrictions, if you were to drill a well, would they still be able to put restrictions and say, you are not, you know...
Not, not to the level of not at likely, it likely it wouldn't be to the level where we would not be able to turn it off completely. But there is the potential, talking to Jesse, there is the potential that if we are by using that well and out of that aquifer, if we're impacting the neighborhood and those that are on wells in that neighborhood, then we would have to reduce our capacity for how much water we'd pump. At that point, we'd probably need to look at either an alternate means of pumping. Likely it would be that we're drawing too much too fast. And slowing that and then building some sort of reservoir to pump the water into and then using that as our, kind of our charge to do the pump for the irrigation system. But yes, there is a possibility, but I would say it wouldn't be to the circumstances where they would shut us off completely.
Call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Carries.
Scoreboard. Field two. AIM Electronics Incorporated. Lindbergh Lions Recreational Complex. Award.
Good evening. If you recall, the Lindbergh Lions indicated that they would donate to the city for a new scoreboard on field number two over on the West Side Rec Building there. So, field one currently has an electronic scoreboard. Field number two, they're looking at getting another one. So this evening, we do have pricing for a scoreboard on field number two. Forgive me, I don't have the dollar amount in front of me.
$4,040.
$4,040. So, if the council would, we would like to approve the purchase of scoreboard for field number two in the amount of $4,040.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goshick, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Yes, West Side Improvement, they're going to chip in the hall works.
That's correct.
Okay.
Call a roll, please.
That's the Lindbergh Lions, right?
Oh, sorry, Lindbergh Lions, yes.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Signpost. Minnesota Surplus Services. Ratify and confirm. Greg?
So, on the MinDOT website, they've got surplus items that they list that they are no longer using. MinDOT is switching from the U-channel posts to the square posts that they use for all of their signs. So they're disposing of all of the U-channels that they currently have at District Three. A number of lots they've got from, we were able to win one of the lots in the amount of $5,325 for 363 posts. These are the posts that we typically use for our signs as well as mailbox supports and stuff like that. They're galvanized steel, so it's not as if they're going to rust or deteriorate by any means. So we looked at it, and it was about a 30% discount from what we would be able to purchase. So it made sense to go ahead and purchase those. This is ratify and confirm. We did purchase those, but we are asking the council to ratify and confirm that purchase for those street sign posts, and that would be charged to the street signs.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to ratify.
I'll second.
Second.
Give it to Raquel.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, how, 363 posts, how long will that last us?
It'll take us a while. I don't have an exact timeline. Usually we get about 150 to 200 of them at a crack. But being that they're galvanized, they're going to be around for as long as we need them. I know on Third Street, we're going to have to put up mailbox supports. I think there was 100 of them that we had to use down there, so we'll use a good chunk of them on that stretch, but they'll last us for a while.
I appreciate you doing things like that to save money.
Yep.
Call a roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Hold business. We have none. New business. Appeal of Heritage Preservation Commission decisions to deny roof permit. Thomas Briscoe, 122 Southeast First Avenue. Consider.
Greg?
So this evening, President, you have an appeal from Mr. Briscoe in regards to the roof permit. I also asked Mr. Gary Block, he's the chairman of the HPC, to be here this evening as well. You have in your packet kind of the timeline in terms of how the project or the timeline of that project went. Couple of things to note. I just got some notes here in regards to that particular building. So it was built in 1892, and based on our records, they called it a boomtown architecture. So yes, the building official did receive a call in regards to what would be needed for that. But until they actually apply for the permit is when it goes to the different departments, which triggered the need for the HPC review. And so, at that point, it went to the HPC for their review and determination of whether or not to recommend approval or not. I know Mr. Block had indicated he had had some conversations with Michael Coop, who is in charge of the Minnesota Historical Society. And correct me if I misspeak in terms of what Mr. Coop indicated to you, but that because of the location and the visibility of the property, it was recommended not to approve that type of roofing material because it didn't... It didn't correlate with the historic nature of the time period that we were looking for, the downtown district. And so that's why the HPC unanimously recommended to not approve that. That permit was because of the nature of the roofing material along with the input from the Minnesota Historical Society. Did I miss anything, Gary?
No, you're fine.
Mr. President, now, did I hear that we have similar roofs in the historic area of our community?
We do, and some of the pictures that were presented by Mr. Briscoe did show those. The things that were different between that and this one is that, we'll use Johnny Sees one as an example. That one's in the middle of the block. And so, two things. It's a second story, so it's up a lot higher. It's not in the line of sight. It's mid-block, so it's hidden from view quite a bit more than what this particular lot is. And so those are the two things that were looked at, you know, in terms of when we reviewed this building permit as opposed to the one in Mr. Briscoe's situation.
Yeah, Alyssa? Could you attend for, you present some of the roles for how to support this appeal hearing?
Please go ahead, Alyssa.
Thank you. Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor. I want to talk a little bit tonight about the appeal before you to make sure that that the council can wear a power of acting because it is in a different role than you normally are used to. Generally speaking, the city council acts in a legislative role. In that role, the city council establishes what policies are, the doctrine ordinance, you define policies. In that capacity, you have broad discretion in your decision-making, and ultimately, you're able to make those decisions based mostly on the discretionary matters that you find important. What we have here tonight is an appeal from a, from the Heritage Preservation Committee. In that sense, as an appeal board, rather than operating in the latest capacity, you are operating in a quasi-judicial capacity. In a quasi-judicial capacity, rather than legislating on broad issues, the city council is really instead acting like a panel of judges. In such, you are to determine the facts associated with a particular land use obligation. In this case, the issue of the denial of the permit by the Heritage Preservation Committee. And then apply those facts to the legal standards and specific criteria already contained in city code and relevant state statutes. In cases such as this, the council does not determine what a law is like. Act like a judge would to apply the laws that exist to the specific circumstances. In acting in such a role, the city council has far less discretion and much really fine consideration of the application to the criteria standards already contained in code and statutes. In general, if the, if the council, or excuse me, if the Heritage Preservation Committee acted in a way that they did not abuse their discretion, then the, their denial of the permit should be approved and upheld. The city usually has a legal basis to overturn such a, such a denial unless there is evidence that shows that the specific criteria which the, well, one or two ways. Either that the Heritage Commission did not apply the criteria correctly to the given fact, or that they applied the wrong criteria for the case. So I just wanted to go over this with you as your job here is a little bit different than it usually is. And we try to make sure that there is a briefing beforehand so that you all know what your role is. And then also to suggest to the council that the way to proceed would be to give each of the people who has an interest in that, mainly the appellant and I believe the Chair of the Preservation, or Heritage Preservation Committee, a set amount of time, say five minutes, to orally make their case to you and for you to ask them questions before you, as the city council, are able to then confer with staff and myself and figure out what your options and opinions will be in the matter of next. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
So next, we should each give them five minutes would be our next course of action. All right.
And Council President, we do have Mr. Briscoe on as well as our Inspector David Barstey, who was mentioned in the appeal, just if there's any questions for him to be able to address.
Okay. So, Mr. Briscoe, would you like to go ahead? I'll get my clock up here, my timer, or get five minutes going.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. All right, well, good evening, the council members, and nice to be here tonight this afternoon. I wish I could be there in person, but I'm starting to try to show out here in person, Pennsylvania, so just, I'm working on my phone here. I'd like to thank you for considering our appeal. Apologize eventually for not securing the building permit before work took place. I thought I'd taken the proper steps in working on the building, especially in regards to the roof. I secured help early on to make sure that I had adequate help. And then I did send a text to the building inspector on May 11th. I didn't get a response to the text, so I actually called him when I was up on the roof with a couple of other contractor types and explained what I was doing. And the reply that I got was basically to make sure I followed the code as far as spacing of perlins, siding fasteners, spacing for fasteners, et cetera. So at that point, we went ahead and ordered materials and had to wait for quite a while for that. I mean, obviously, things are back to work. We began our install without a permit, nothing else to me. I thought that the contractor was going to secure a permit, and I guess he thought that I was. And I got a text when I was out of state. I thought, I thought, oh, we have problems now. So I texted back, and he said, no, I don't have a permit, so I said, we better stop working. So at that point, I filed for the permit. And that was forwarded on to the Heritage Preservation Commission. And obviously, as we heard earlier, they denied the permit for that. They did approve a permit for signage on the building. And so we deal that to the city council, and here we are tonight. As far as, just doing a bit of research on building materials that were present back in 1892, the best I can figure out, they didn't actually have asphalt shingles at that point in time. They came in the beginning of 1990. More widely used back in the, maybe the teens to the 20s, when somebody decided they could mass market those as a material. So prior to that, they had things such as, oh, cedar shakes, plate tile, slate, copper, and the developed steel roofing, 1857. So I guess the basis of my appeal is that as I walked through the little falls after the denial and was looking around, I did notice examples of steel siding, either on siding or on roofing on two different buildings. And as far as that line of sight goes, I know that before, I was on my trip out east here about a week and a half ago. I go into my daughter's house on the west side of Little Falls. As I drove past Johnny's Sports Park, I looked up at the AMI mirror, and you can actually see that bigger side of the roof, the west side of the roof, all the way until you actually enter the bridge. And as the bridge kind of takes a drop, it'll take a drop south through this side of it. And then coming back eastbound, you pick it up about a whole lot of block later than you would going westbound. So I guess, in my opinion, I'm thinking that the president has been set in the past with the use of those materials. And that's what I'd like to base my appeal on. So all of your notes, questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I, Mr. President, if I, I just want to make sure I have the timeline right here. I saw a text to the building inspector, May 11th. And then...
And I sent a screenshot of that text in with my appeal to the city.
I'm looking at that right now and also attached here. So that, there's a, it looks to me to be, you know, intentions of starting this project in May, yet the permit application for the work isn't dated until August 17th. I think step, step one in the project is apply for the permit.
I totally agree, and that's why I apologize for that. I thought the contractor applied, even I applied as a building owner. So I was surprised when work got started, and that certainly got us off in the wrong foot. But as hard as building material, it's certainly no secret at that point in time that my, May 11th, what my intention was.
Any other questions?
I, Mr. President, I don't know who to direct this to, but even if that permit wasn't secured in a timely matter, that's not what is based HPC's decision on, correct? It's based on the...
Correct.
Okay.
Right, I'm just looking at, this is similar to a situation that came before the Planning Commission. And, you know, so once again, we have another body that's asked to fix something for somebody when they, when they went about it in the, in the wrong order.
Gary? Any comments for us?
Yeah.
Yeah, quick please.
Do any of this? First of all, HPC, if you look on the website for the city of Little Falls, the HPC's primary purpose is to work on the preservation and protection of buildings and land that have a special historical, cultural, or aesthetic interest or value within the city of Little Falls. When I, when I was contacted by Wendy, that Mr. Briscoe was, was here at City Hall to get a, get a building permit, and he already had the project started, he already had sheets of metal up on the roof, he already has the studs screwed into his, into his roof. Wendy says, what should I do? And I said, well, it needs to go through HPC because it's in the historic district. And so we, we met, obviously, you know what the results were. I did contact Michael Coop from State Historic Preservation Organization. Michael has been very good to the city of Little Falls. I think he's very, very proud of HPC and the things that we've accomplished here in the city of Little Falls. And so I told Michael what was going on, and in his own words, I'll just repeat very much like what Greg said, Mr. Coop said, if that kind of standing seam design like you see in houses was never used on this building, then it should be considered an inappropriate alteration. Mr. Coop also says, it sounds like the most current roofing material on the building is asphalt shingle. If the owner was replacing the roof with asphalt shingle, that would be considered an in-kind alteration, something that's typically easily approved. But because the owner is installing a metal roof, that constitutes an entirely new and different material. There are different kinds of metal roofing. At that point, he was asking if he's using a standing seam design or individual shingles that mimic asphalt shingles. The type of metal may dictate how the HPC responds. Since it is a corner building, that is all the more reason for the HPC to review this case and review your guidelines. So Mr. Coop was concerned that it was the end of the historic district, the eastern end where it was very noticeable. And so this is, this was the discussion. This all could have been avoided. Again, I know the building permit should not be part of this, but it would have been taken care of. We all know that if you have a building permit, the contractor or the person who has the building permit tapes it onto their front window so everybody knows you do have a building permit. So the project was started. Had Mr. Briscoe come to HPC, we would have discussed this. And Mr. Briscoe and I and his wife have, have talked about this face to face, and I'm so glad he did that because I was more than happy to talk to him. As the, as the, as the city council knows, it's, it's not an easy job when you're appointed for something and when you're appointed by the mayor to represent what we need to do in the historic district in downtown Little Falls. So we're not here to tick anybody off, make them mad or something. We're doing this to follow the rules, and we voted on it unanimously with the support of Greg Kimmon also. And, and so Mr. Briscoe and, and I and his wife talked about this. I'm the one who suggested he appeal to the city council, but I said, HPC will not change their mind because of what you've done, what you, what you're planning on doing, what you've done already. And we did agree between him and I in conversation that if he had to remove all of those studs he already has screwed into his, into his roof, that he probably would have to put an asphalt shingle or even rolled roof, which would be very much acceptable. There are steel shingles that do mim, that do mimic asphalt shingles, those could also be used, and it's just, just the type of steel that he had used because it was very noticeable on the end of the historic district. It was mentioned about Johnny C's. I honestly don't know what happened there. We all know committees aren't perfect, things are passed in the, in the, in the, in the past, but as we look ahead, this is an unbelievable group of people that we have in HPC right now, including our, our, our city councilman here, Wayne Liljergren. And these people, and I've been on it for quite a few years, this is really a dedicated group of people that go to St. Paul, they get suggestions, they, they like to follow the law, and we come to you and make a suggestion, this is our recommendation. And so I'm hoping the city council can uphold what you've, what you've asked the HPC to do.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Gary, I just have one question before you. You said you follow the law?
Well, we follow the suggestions. I'm, I'm sorry, I should not have used the word law. We, we follow the suggestions of the State Historic Preservation Organization, SHIPPLE. And there are mentors, they're very helpful for us at Linden Hill right now with things that are going on there. And so Michael Coop, who's in charge of this, thinks the world of what's going on in Little Falls. And when I explained to him about the US Bank Building and the Woolworth Building and the possibility of the theater, he was just excited about what's happening in downtown Little Falls, and I would like this to continue with this building. By the way, he's done a great job of that building. The sign on the side, on the east side, the mural that's up there, I don't know if you've noticed that yet, we gave him permission to do that. It's, that building was in rough shape, and the Briscoes have done a great job of bringing it back, but HPC does not agree on what's, what he's doing with the roof.
Just that question for you, since he mentioned, and it was in some of the information that I read, that asphalt shingles probably didn't exist at the time the building was built. Is it the same type of metal that might have been used at that point, or is it a different type of metal?
I do not have an answer for that. That would be a contractor. I don't even, Greg, would you even have an answer for that?
I'm doubtful that it's the same type because back then, it would have been some sort of galvanized metal that they would have put on there. Again, not an architect or, or, you know, historical training or anything like that, but I'm doubtful that they would have had that back then. Usually, it would have been galvanized steel that would have been on there.
And if it's the same material...
A, a quick reiterating of that is that under the historic preservation guidelines, there are two options, one of them is re-plant, the most recent thing that was already there, and that's really the asphalt shingle versus having to restore it to something that is historically accurate. Those are the two options.
Okay.
Mr. President. Mr. Black, you said that there was some form of snafu with the Johnny C's roofing. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
I can't even elaborate on that, Mr. Starley. As we all know, being on different committees over the years, some committees may favor something else. I honestly don't remember that happening, but obviously, it did. And it should not have happened.
Council President?
Yes.
I spoke with Linda Lemire this week regarding the decision to remand request for steel roof on the Tower Brothers building. And her remark was that Mr. and Mrs. Briscoe had done the work without a permit, and it raised her hackles. And that's why she turned down. She also said that she had heard that Tom had officially started work without a permit in Anamia, but she was not able to decipher sources. So I called the city of Anamia, and I spoke with the man in charge of permits, and he said that Tom did get permits when he needed to. In fact, he had gone to the city with plans to redo the steel creamery, and he was apparently really well-prepared and also concerned about going through the process appropriately. He had all of his plans, all of his ducks in a row, but somehow the county was involved and they dragged their feet for so long that Mr. Briscoe moved on and came to Little Falls. The HPC's mission is to preserve old buildings. And when somebody comes into our town that wants to invest in the old buildings, I've lived here for 15 years and that building's been sitting there empty. And another 15 years, it would be crumbling with the roof being in bad shape. And so I think when someone wants to invest in those buildings, that we should do everything we can do to help them and then not to deny them permission because they raised their hackles. Now, I don't know if there's something he can do with the roof that he's already started so that the nuts or bolts or whatever things aren't showing, so that the seams are hidden. But I think that we should try to figure out a way to help this man succeed in what he started, because if he doesn't do it, who's going to? And when you stand on the sidewalk in front of this building, the Tower Brothers building, and you look toward the north, you see a ton of steel. One whole building is sided with it, you see the boundary Johnny C's. It's his view from his front window. So the precedent is already set. There are other historic buildings with that type of roof. Why wouldn't we let him just do it?
Mr. Council President, could I react?
Yes.
That building's not been empty for 15 years. Chuck Howard has been in there the whole time, although it looks that way. The, sorry, the back of the buildings, HPC has no control over that. Folks like Adrelic Insurance, his back is facing the Falls bar, he, he can do whatever he wants. He has steel in the back of there. You look at any of the buildings, I'm trying to think what's, what's over there, the Taekwondo building, those all, and this is what Raquel is talking about, those all have steel backing. That's the back of the buildings, which HPC has no control over. The only control anybody has is the city on the amount of signage they have in the back of the building, but they literally can do anything they want in the back of the building.
Provided it meets code.
Correct, and they get a permit to do it.
Do we have any pictures of the building we're talking about?
I do have some.
Building is looking a lot better.
It is.
Yep. Mr. President, I have a question for Alyssa. Alyssa, as you talk about us being more like judges on this, do we have to take into consideration the precedent that is set with Johnny C's having a metal roof? Or can we just totally discard that?
Mayor, council member, council president, you can disregard the issue of Johnny C's. If we had something that it was clearly done within the last year, it must be a different matter, but the, the job of the city council in this case is to specifically look at what the Heritage Preservation Commission did in applying the heritage preservation guidelines to this particular situation. It starts over again in appeals simply because the city council changes over time, and as the Heritage Preservation Chair pointed out, sort of, that makes up of the Heritage Preservation Committee.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How, how long has the HPC been in existence?
Ever since the Buckman Building was re, was restored. So it's, what, 20 some years, late 1990s?
Well, doesn't that coincide with roughly the same timeframe that the Johnny C's building?
No, 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 no. That used to be Broadway Sports Bar.
Well, I, I realize that, but wasn't that, that, that building was also in rough shape before it got fixed up?
It was.
And I'm, I don't know it to be true, but I'm saying it's possible with the timeline is that the building we now call Johnny C's might have been re-roofed before the, the HPC might not have even had a review on it.
No, Mr. Hanson, that's not true.
Okay.
Because, because I was on the committee when the previous owners filed bankruptcy and the taxpayers basically lost about $30,000 of funds that we had provided for them. So Johnny purchased that after I was on HPC at the time, so it hasn't been that long ago.
Okay. I thought it was done, I thought that roof would have been done back when it was Broadway or before that even. Okay.
It, it was done when it was Broadway, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Well, my, my, my point doesn't really matter, because you were on the committee and said so. I mean, that notwithstanding though, I mean, if something slips through the cracks, and like you said, there's different members of different boards over time who are going to feel differently about things.
Well, looking at your picture there, you need to do something soon because the pearling's been added and it just screws right into the sublayers.
Correct, and I will say, I was at the, the HPC meeting, the HPC did also respond that they are willing to help, you know, with the cost if they wanted to do some sort of, you know, the steel asphalt coated shingles, and were even willing to do a meeting at the end of that week if that was something that Mr. Briscoe wanted to move forward. So they wanted to see the, the character and the historic portion of it and recognize the need to do something soon, and so they were willing to, to do what they could to, to move forward with it. But with the standing seam roofing like that, that's not something that they felt would match the historic character of that, of that area.
Mr. President, so with both, both people here, on both sides of the fence, is there anything between the both of you that could be proposed or, or resolved to, to keep this project moving forward but falling in line with, with the HPC recommendations and, and financial cost of things? Is this something that, that could be worked out amongst those, about the, the two parties involved?
I think as Greg said, when, when, when we denied this unanimously, we did, we did mention in that denial that we would, we would accept a, a asphalt shingle roof or a steel roof that mimicked asphalt shingles. And now in retrospect, I'm sure the commission would also accept a rolled roof, which would have been the early 1900s. This could be removed. I know Mr. Briscoe and I talked about this, but he'd have a lot of holes to fill. We would be more than happy to sit down with the Briscoes and offer them help like we've done with every other downtown business that came to us. There's just the fact that there wasn't the building permit, which has nothing to do with this, but had there been an application for a building permit, all sides could have met and we could have made suggestions, and we would not be here tonight. This is the sad thing.
And it does list in the one spot. Go ahead.
Um, if there are a book or some kind of writing that talks about what the guidelines are for downtown design, and does it have anything in there that pertains specifically to roofs?
Mr. President, if I may. Our city code does call out in the HPC district, and I'm trying to pull it up here just to get the exact language, but it calls out the construction standards of the Department of Interior, I believe is what it's called. So that is what we wrote, we refer to quite a bit, and we rely on Michael Coop to, to give us guidance on that as well. But that's what kind of guides the HPC in terms of what they're looking for, for the district.
What are those recommendations that are in that criteria, in that guideline, design guideline?
So, Council President, Raquel, if, I think you're referring to is the downtown design guidelines, and I think the last update to that was in 2018. That, that's the recommendation, that, that was produced by Thomas Zahn and, and approved by the, the HPC. So that's, that's a document that can go to property owners and show them examples of acceptable improvements, and it does not typically refer to anything on the roofs other than to inspect the roofs and make sure that they're, you know, repaired. But it is not outside of, I believe, outside of the purview based on our ordinances that the HPC would not, the HPC does have the authority to, to deny a permit in, in this matter. The exteriors of buildings are all of, you know, a lot of their discretion, so roofs being included. And they, and their funding program that Mr. Black is referring to does allow for them to, you know, contribute funds, low-interest loans and deferred loans, which can offset the costs of, of projects, which is usually what's necessary because in historic buildings, we typically find that they're more expensive to redo to the historic standards than they would be to the modern, to something in a modern standard. So that's, as he's referring, that's a... So that's, as he's referring, that's on the table. If we're bringing something up to an acceptable historic standard, as Mr. Block referenced, you know, a couple of different options.
Sorry, go ahead, Frank.
It seems like you don't have to adhere to using exact material they use back in the day. It's more like the HPC is trying to find a look, even if you use tin that looks like asphalt or something, so.
You're correct.
I was just going to mention in Mr. Briscoe's letter about the building permit he has in there, "I plan to act as my own general contractor," so it was up to him to either get the permit or discuss with the other gentleman working with him who is going to get the permit. Alyssa, what would be next?
Council President and the council members, at this point, when you are ready to move forward with it, you would move forward with an appeal to the City Council. As a reminder, the appeal standard is set forth in city code, it is under Section 2.02, and then under the historical preservation portion of it and the appeal. At a state, just so you're aware of what it is, as we before, right here, the City Council may modify or overrule the commission's decision, but only if the project is found to be consistent with the United States Secretary of Interior's Standards for Historic Preservation Project or Adopted Heritage Preservation Guidelines. That's the standards that you're looking at as you go to make this decision, and your options would be to move to or rule this decision completely, to uphold the decision completely, or to in some way modify the decision, as long as it is consistent with the Standards for Historic Preservation Project or the Adopted Heritage Preservation Guidelines.
Someone want to make a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to uphold the decision of the HPC and the denial of the roof permit. With that motion, I just want to say that I appreciate the work that our volunteer boards do, and so it's something I take seriously, whatever board it is, the prospect of us over, overruling them.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, I, I do have a concern with the fact that, and I understand Mr. Block's explanation as far as what Johnny C.'s, that there was an exception made. The volunteers, I'll reiterate what Councilman Hanson said, it's greatly appreciated. I appoint these people and appreciate what they do. We've already overturned one on them, and this has nothing to do with, I really appreciate the gentleman buying the building and wanting to make improvements on them. You know, we get caught up in the economic development part sometimes, and then we get caught up in the HPC part, and sometimes it's a struggle, because we don't like empty buildings, and they're starting to be taken care of, and we don't want to make it too difficult. So I just also want to thank the HPC and all of our volunteers for what they do, because they've got a tough job. Say.
Mr. President, just one thing, to me, it seems like the, the issue is more of a line-of-sight issue, where if we can see it, then it has one standard, but if we don't see it, there's another standard. And that, I mean, a historical building, whether it's on the backside, the front side, the top side, or, or the basement, is still a historical building. So I don't know where the, how, how the line-of-sight issue becomes an issue.
It has to do with what they regulate and what they don't regulate.
What's the difference?
That's just the way it's set up, correct? Call a roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
No.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofila?
Yes.
Motion carries.
But I would encourage you, Mr. Briscoe, to work with the, the HPC, to talk to them about some of their funding options that might be available to help.
EDA?
EDA. Don't know, something there as well, to help with some of the costs. Thank you for your time and your work, and you also, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Health insurance rate approval, Health Partners Sourcewell, approve. John?
Thank you, Council President. I believe Annie is on as well. I can pass it over to her to give you the update on our renewal rates for health insurance.
So as we have been in the meeting, we received our capital transfer, we were from Sourcewell, and given an 8.2% increase, and it's also holding up to a maximum of 9% for 2023. So we've come to an agreement with you again, and asking the council to approve the house in terms of the new work for this Smart Plan 3 for 2022, rates are listed on the agenda.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022 health insurance renewal.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Mr. President, my concern was, can we vote? Brad and I vote on this.
Are you compensated members of the Board of Trustees for the Sourcewell Health Insurance Pool, or you would be Better Health Collective?
Yes. Take your time.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. When we look at column A with the 1,400 and then 8441, and then the 2,800 and the 2,242, now is that, that difference of $560, is that, is that what the actuarial value comes in to that? Or how come, you know, what's, why is there a difference between the HSA employer contribution, but the monthly premium is, is lower?
On, Council President, on, may I ask, just for clarity, so the total monthly premium is what, is effectively what we're renewing tonight? So that, that is what Sourcewell, in our health insurance pool, has determined to be the rate for our group, using Smart Plan 3, which is our only option. The two difference is in amounts here, those are what we've negotiated with our bargaining groups as to the contribution that the employees are going to make towards that, 84106 and, and 2,24267. And that has been incorporated into the preliminary budget and discussed, because as our contracts state, anything over a 7% increase must, is, is to be negotiated, and this is what we've come to an agreement on in spreading out the, the costs of the rates. So the 1,428, that's, that's our, that's the determination that we've made on the contribution that we make towards the HSA. So that's half of the deductible for the Smart Plan 3. So Smart Plan 3 is a 2,800 deductible for single and a 5,600 deductible for family coverage, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so you.
Those are your deductibles for the, for the two different plans?
Correct. The total deductible is, is 28 and 50, 5,600s. We, we then contribute towards the HSA 1,400 and 2,800 as a, from the employer contribution towards the employee.
And in those different plans, we got 20, we got 21 that are in the single and 22 in the family?
Correct. As of the, as of the time of the renewal package, that is what, that's how many people are enrolled into each of them.
Do, do those employees have the option? Because when I was looking to some of the plans through the Sourcewell, there is also a employer plus spouse, and employer plus child. They're not, that, those two plans aren't available?
No, the, the only plan that we have available for election is the Smart Plan 3, and then they can elect either a single or the family.
And then one other question. On page 49, there's a, there's a stop-loss fee, and then there's administrative fees.
Correct.
So is, is it, are these plans, are these basically self-insured plans that they have a, have a stop-loss plan to cover?
So, yeah, it's not necessarily self-insured, but the group, so Sourcewell, on behalf of the members of the pool, goes and purchases a stop-loss level of insurance, so that they can buy down the overall premiums from Health Partners. So any claims that exceed a total of $250,000, that's when the stop-loss insurance kicks in. So that, that stop-loss rate is what is part of our overall premium, those are, those are the rates for 2022. And then the admin fees are what was part of the RFP process that Sourcewell did on behalf of the entire pool to negotiate for us. So, so those admin fees were, were competitive, very competitive, I believe, in the last RFP process, from what they presented. I think that was concluded in 2020. So then those are the, the fixed costs that are outside of premiums. And I know there was a lot of questions a couple, a month ago or so, and we provided a lot more details of information about our actual premiums paid and what our total claims were in the, in the history, but this is what we're projecting for the 2020 new, 2022 cycle.
Right, because that's the way they, when, when you're, when you're working with self-insured, they look at the, what, what history is that, and they, and, and so actually, Health Partners is just a third-party administrator to every, to the, to the Sourcewell, they are, through the, and the people that invest into that health insurance program. Is that correct?
So, yeah, I don't want to call it a broker, they're not the broker, but health, health insurance, or Sourcewell administers this, this insurance on behalf of a pool of members. So we're part of, with school districts, other counties, other cities, we're with a larger pool, so that, that larger pool can then go and collectively bargain with Health Partners and any other insurance provider, and that's what they do, the request for proposals from them, to ver, you know, to evaluate what the cost of insurance is for that entire pool. If, if we were out on our own and doing our own self-insurance, we would, you know, we would be at the mercy of that history, you know, whatever that look-back period is going to be. Currently, it's two years. And if we had huge instances of utilization, then our rates would go way high. If we don't use it as much, then our rates would go down a lot. So it's a, it's a roller coaster effect. What, what we gained by being a part of the pool is that ability to temper those increases as well as, you know, it's going to temper the decreases, but we've been really right on, even though we've had some high increases, if you look at, at the history in the last seven years that we've been with Sourcewell, we've really been right there competitive with the national average of health insurance costs.
Yeah, because, you know, well, you're basically doing, instead of having this type of thing, you're trying to level everything out. You know, I totally understand.
That's all I have, Mr. President. Before we call a roll, you never really answered Greg's question?
Well, I was going to direct that to Alyssa. Alyssa, this is, the question is there because Mayor Zilka and Councilmember Hercock are members of the Board of Trustees that governs the Sourcewell Insurance Pool. So they, they are ultimately one of the decision-makers for what the renewals are for, for everybody. So those, the Board of Trustees is made up of members from all of the, the parties in the pool, and they, they do have a, a compensation for their meeting attendance. They're not tied to the performance of the pool in terms of its membership, its profitability, whatever, which it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have profitability, its intent is to return those to the governing agencies that are a part of this. So are they impacted at all from the conflict of interest in determining if we're going to renew our contract with Sourcewell?
Just to clarify, John and the council members, your compensation is based on your meeting, is correct?
Our time at the meeting.
And you do not have a financial stake in the company when it comes to the profit loss or the number of rooms that choose to adopt these insurance plans, correct?
Correct. Sorry, we didn't say correct, yes.
Okay. So there is no finance, there's no financial interest that you would have or benefit personally from any adopting this insurance plan?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. In that case, there, I don't see that there is a conflict of interest in this, because you do not have a, a, well, let me back up and ask one more question. As your role as board member, do you carry a fiduciary duty to the Sourcewell?
I don't know. I don't know.
I would recommend that, in that case, if you're not sure if you carry a fiduciary duty to Sourcewell, that you abstain from this vote, based on a conflict of interest until we can figure it out.
Okay. Call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
I'm staying.
Hercock?
I'm staying.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canofila?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything? Announcements, Planning Commission Public Hearings, October 11th, 2021, expansion of non-conforming dwelling 811 South Lindbergh Drive. Item two, vacation of alley, block five, Country Club Edition. Item three, vacation of part of right-of-way of 10th Avenue Southeast within block five, Country Club Edition. Any other announcements? We'll adjourn at 8:39.